Thank you. The April 8th meeting of the Vancouver Planning Commission will come to order. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Jay.
Present.
Commissioner Wheeler has alerted us that they will be absent. Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Cavill.
Present.
Commissioner Liddell.
Here.
Vice Chair Pyle.
Present.
Chair Adaglomé.
Present. Given that we have received notification of absence, we will, the chair will entertain a motion to excuse said absence.
I move to propose to excuse Commissioner Wheeler's absence.
A motion has been protested. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? The motion carries. Please mark the absence as excused. That takes us into the first agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes from the March 11th, 2025 meeting. If there is no discussion from my fellow commissioners on that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as so written.
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
As so written.
Sorry, March 11th?
March 11th.
March 11th.
Excellent. A motion has been protested. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, please call. Is this the A and A's photo or is this a roll call vote? Okay, please call.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Oh, this is a perfect, okay. In that case, thank you so much. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the March 11th, 2025 meeting as so written?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you. Sorry, and let's make sure that we note that abstention as well. Thank you so much. Okay, it takes us into the first workshop on the agenda, which is the comprehensive plan update. Do we have any introductory words, Brian, for this agenda item?
No, I think we'll turn it right over to our speakers. The comprehensive plan, you heard, you heard about this at your last meeting in March. You'll hear about again, different aspects of the plan in May and probably then on end. So, without further ado, I'll just turn it over to our speakers. Ching Ching Co., Ching Ching Co., and Dominique Martinelli.
All right. Thank you, planning commissioners for having us. You all know me. My name is Dominique. One of our senior planners. I have a guest here today. I'll do a quick introduction.
Ching Ching Co. with the Economic Prosperity and Housing Team.
So, we're here to talk about the draft goals and policies for the comprehensive plan. This has been a long time coming. But essentially what we're doing here is the first of two workshops on this. And we're going to be talking about sort of the meat of the comprehensive plan, what this document does. And, you know, we'll get into this a little bit more. But when you look at the final comprehensive plan document and all of its pages, you know, we're going to have three major efforts as part of this. It's, you know, the future land use map, which you all have reviewed. You know, the two possibilities. There's going to be the draft code, and then this is going to be the other piece of it. So this is essentially the goals and, you know, what the document does, what our comprehensive plan is doing for the community for the next 20 years. I'll do a quick review of the organization process and philosophy. We'll review just, you know, very high level takeaways of what the goals and policies are. Ching Ching is going to really weigh in on like the housing and economic opportunity policies and really dive into like what our departments are doing there and what we envision for the future. I'll cover a lot on the land use and climate ones. And then we'll review next steps and discussion. But just really looking for your feedback on this first set. And you'll notice there's only four sets of, four chapters worth of goals and policies right now. This is such a substantial effort that we felt that we wanted to break it into two sections so we could narrow the focus in the conversation to a little bit more manageable bite-sized pieces. Next time we'll be bringing this to you. We'll be focusing on an additional five chapters worth of policies. So just a little bit on the plan organization and what this is going to look like when you, you sort of pull the document up. You know, we've, we've reviewed this with you all. We've gone through multiple study sessions and work sessions. But you all know that there's a plan vision statement that was developed probably about two years ago. And we engage about 1,000 residents in the community. That's where the North Star for our policy framework, which generally asks the question of like, what's our community going to be like in 2045? And it's, that's the status for, you know, all the rest of the efforts and where we're going. From that vision statement, we developed nine chapters, which are broad categories by which we organize the overall planning effort. So this is the discrete categories by which we're thinking about things. Each of those chapters has a vision statement, which, you know, identifies like what we think the community is going to be like. And then we have more specific goals that build off of that, which are the desired outcomes that the city aims to achieve over the next 20 years. This is thinking of like, what is our city going to? You know, what's the future conditions? And they're a little bit more specific future conditions. And then the policies are where we get into the specifics of like, what are we actually talking about here? You know, how do we accomplish these types of things? And this is really the meat and potatoes of a lot of what we're doing. There's a bit of a divide when we go from goals to policies. We're doing what's called an un nested policy framework. And we're thinking a lot about the concept of co-benefits. So like, let's say, you know, we build a, a complete streets corridor with, you know, additional tree plantings and things like that. You know, that might be a policy that we have. And it addresses, you know, co-benefits of improving the climate and improving impacts. So there have been, yeah, and in fact, while also making our street safer. So there are many policies in here where we, where we do something, it's going to affect multiple categories. So we, we have a situation where like, one policy relates to multiple goals, and you'll see that as we go through here. The actions are the final step of this, and these are going to be released as part of the draft comprehensive plan over the summer. We're not going to have the opportunity to review this, this part of this work session. But these go into even more specific statements of like, here's exactly what you need to do to implement this policy. And just talking a little bit generally about the values and goals of policies, why do we need them? What's the importance of doing this? Why do this? Kind of a couple of key things. That sets the overall direction for how we intend to achieve outcomes desired for our community. It guides the way we make land use decisions. So when, you know, Brian or other staff members bring forward rezoning applications, we often justify them in our staff recommendations and our staff report based on compliance with the comprehensive plan. So if you have goals and policies that tell us what we want to do and what we want to achieve, that makes the land use decisions that you all, that you all recommend for approval to city council. It's, it's grounding it in something. It's making sure we all are understanding and have the same shared language. On the guides programmatic and capital investments, it's essentially a 20-year work plan for the city. We build a lot of our strategic planning efforts based off of the language we have in our comprehensive plan and the things that our comprehensive plan calls for. And then we also need these for grant purposes. There are specific grants that we apply for that often require us to have a specific policy language in order to be eligible. And then it also sends signals to the private market and it guides investment in the community. When we say something or we say we're going to make investments in this area, these are the things we care about. It's indirectly sort of implied statement or, you know, this is what we intend to do. It's sort of a promise to the community what we intend to do. And for that reason, we've been pretty specific on the way that we've developed these. And we thought a lot about how other comprehensive plans are generally structured, what works well and what doesn't. And we really thought about the concept of what's a lean comprehensive plan. And it's, it's something that doesn't get too broad. So you'll see, I think we have somewhere, we'll probably end up around 120 policies within the comprehensive plan. And I think we are at about 35 goals. But we don't want to do is what some other jurisdictions have done where you have thousands of policies and, you know, committing, over committing to what the city can actually accomplish over a 20-year period. We look at this list and we say, this is, it's pretty ambitious, but we are being very cognizant about not putting in language about things that we can't control or things that we can't directly influence. So that's kind of the big piece. And then we're also thinking about accountability and metrics. There's a separate effort going on to identify metrics for each of these policies and sort of how we measure our progress over time. We want to be cautious to bring things forward or to not bring things forward that we cannot measure. And then this graphic, this presentation slide has a little image on the right of like, you know, what one of the pages of the comprehensive plan might look like. So this is a draft layout that we have where we have like the goal language. And you can kind of see that there's like supporting language and it'll show associated policies in action. So when you actually open up the comp plan, most of the pages are going to look something similar to this where you have a goal and you have policies and actions to implement that goal. And then just process wise, we've been working on, you know, the overall comprehensive plan for the last couple of years. We've been doing pretty substantial and broad engagement as part of that. More specific focused conversations. And we've been gathering the notes from all of those and collecting it. And we've built these policies around kind of that key feedback we've received. And we've had, you know, the community partners working group, which is the, the core advisory, co-creative policy group working on the comprehensive plan. They've been shaping these, these policies in small working groups. We've been bringing them to our community working groups, which are orange on the diagram. And further refining these. So these have gone through multiple rounds of iteration. And then we've been recently bringing them to our internal staff working groups. There are parks department, you know, economic opportunity. And these other departments in the city that are implementing these things and getting their direction. And now we're here with you kind of talking about those things. And yeah, part of the process too has been literally going back and looking at all of the existing plans and policies that we have in place. So for instance, reside Vancouver or the transportation system plan with the climate action framework and duplicating kind of the key pieces that are in those policy documents and really putting a bow and kind of an overarching framework for those efforts. So getting into the draft goals, I'm going to cover land use and climate. And then Ching Ching is going to cover the economic policy, opportunity, and housing policies. But we essentially have four goals here. And there's an additional attachment that was included in the packet that goes through and says what all of the goals and policies are. So when we get into the discussion, we can go a little bit more in depth on that. But essentially what we have here, so we have four goals, which focus on connecting accessible neighborhoods, built environment promoting health, reduce carbon in the built environment and the efficiency of land. And generally like some of the policies that you'll see here. You know, we've been talking a lot about connecting accessible neighborhoods and sort of the idea of the 15-minute city. That's really kind of what, you know, L U one is focusing on. And some of the policies that implement that are really thinking about how we use land. So this is encouraging infill and reuse, thinking about, you know, under you, like utilizing unused parcels for, you know, redevelopment, thinking about access to transit and, you know, co-locating house and housing, commercial services. We also have a policy on here around annexation. So thinking about annexation and the concept of, you know, our existing land use framework. Then also thinking a little bit about urban design and the transition and sort of like what our community is going to look and feel like. Parking is something that's also heavily addressed in here. So this is getting away from, you know, overbuilding parking on private lots and focusing more towards parking maximums and all of that within the context of trying to, you know, drive more transit oriented development, which is something we've talked about quite a bit here. And there are currently 12 draft policies that relate to this chapter. Climate. We have four goals. And if you look at the bottom, we've listed all of the poll, like how many policies relate. And by far, this chapter has more policies than any of the other chapters. And it's no surprise, given the state of the climate issue that we're facing and the amount of overall effort that the city has been putting towards addressing the climate issue. So if you go through here and you look at it, you know, we have resiliency and adaptation, increasing biodiversity, enhancing natural spaces. You know, that's, that's thinking about like our tree canopy goal of 28% by 2030. You know, trying to increase the amount of natural spaces in our community. Decreasing emission. You know, there's a lot in here about protecting and restoring critical areas and ecosystems. That's some of the policies. There was multiple policies on that. There's multiple policies on just general reduction of emissions, thinking about, you know, how much BMT per capita are we putting in place? And how can we get people, you know, using alternate modes of transportation, things like that. And then also thinking about critical areas. You know, you recently did the adoption of the critical areas ordinance. How do we start to, you know, preserve environmentally sensitive lands for conservation? You know, there's a lot of stuff on energy usage in there and green buildings. And really thinking a lot about like stormwater management and water conservation. That's kind of a key component as well. And then kind of going to these next year and pass it off to Ching Ching.
Um, yeah, for the housing goals, we've got six goals on here, 22 policies. So this is really focused on how do we create that community with diverse housing types that are affordable to a wide range of people? And, and people are able to access the kind of housing that they, they want and and feel proud to live there. So really this is focused on, you have housing production, just making sure that housing continues to be created to keep up with the demand. We've got diverse and accessible housing, so ensuring that there's a wide variety of housing types to, to meet both traditional and non-traditional household needs, accessibility needs and, and kind of allow people have, people have expressed that they need to not have a non-shared walls in their house. So ensuring that those types of housings are available for people who, who need and want them, but, but still reaching our density goals and to promote the urban fabric that, that we're pushing for to, to improve accessibility and, and connectivity throughout the neighborhood and community. We're also focused on reducing housing homelessness, of course, ensuring everybody has access to housing. Preventing displacement for, especially for historically underserved communities and ensuring that the growth and prosperity of the community isn't only that certain community member, that all community members are able to benefit. And community members who are more vulnerable are not pushed out as prices fluctuate over time. And then access to homeownership is really focused on allow, providing an opportunity for wealth creation and growth. Ensuring that community members are able to stay in the community that they they live and enjoy the, the growth and wealth creation that ownership often brings. And then affordable housing. This ties into several of the other items, but ensuring that people are able to afford where they live and not be displaced. On the economic opportunity, we've got four goals here and 14 policies. Really, these are related to ensuring community members have access to stable living wage and employment as well as additional wealth creation, wealth creation opportunities. And especially prioritizing historic groups who have historically been excluded from these opportunities. So these include investing in people, ensuring that there is education and skills training available for, for people and, and people have the opportunity and ability to to seek unemployment opportunities. These also include mitigating barriers to success and seeking employment, such as childcare, mobility access and things of that nature. I think thriving economies and industries, looking at how we promote economic growth and in the community itself. Circular and sustainable economies, looking at promoting industries and innovation that reduce or combat climate impacts as well as looking at new new areas of growth that the city can promote, especially looking at how regional and national trends and, and employment are fluctuating. And job types and industries that may have historically provided living wage, wage jobs are no longer available or no longer competitive in, in today's economy. As well as inclusive and community centered economic growth, really looking at the, the wealth and and opportunities that exist in the community. How can we both leverage those to better serve the community as well as our community is our greatest asset for ideas and creation and solving local issues and hopefully scaling those solutions to be able to export. Yeah, um, I think overall.
Yeah. And then just, you know, we have some additional slides here that we're not going to cover too much more in depth. Because I think we gave a pretty in-depth detail, but you know, increasing affordability and access, preventing displacement, diversifying housing and streamlining development. These are kind of like, you know, the overall policy takeaways. And you know, as we go into next steps here, you know, as I mentioned, we'll be coming back for an additional round of review with you. And these are the additional chapters that we'll be reviewing. Parks, recreation, open space and community health. Equity inclusion, transportation, mobility, community feel, infrastructure, public facilities and services. You know, I want to talk a little bit about equity inclusion that a lot of the policies, you know, are going to have some language about, you know, equitable implementation of some of these policies and thinking about who has access and all that. Our equity inclusion chapter is going to have more specific policies related to, you know, equitable inclusion, but we've tried to embed that language in a lot of these. And that chapter will have more of an intentional focus. Once we do that, we'll have further refinement of the policies with the community working groups. And then these policies and goals. You know, this overall framework that we're doing today will be reviewed or, you know, released for public comment during the actual draft comprehensive plan. So we'll, we'll put this out when we put out the draft plan for review. And that's also going to include some attric, actions and metrics to measure implementation. And then with that, I think the rest of this workshop is space for you all to kind of provide feedback on the draft policies and, you know, any high level statements, but also like specific language statements or policies that we might have missed. And then just asking us questions about, you know, how the city might be implementing some of those stuff already, how we envision implementing some of these policies in the future. So.
Perfect. Thank you both so much. Commissioner Cavill?
I'm curious about, you know, there is all pretty, this is all pretty high level. So, you know, nuts and bolts, how might some of these actually like be implemented when it comes to housing decision? So I mean, take like, you know, expand workforce development and career access or something like, how do you think that comes into play in terms of like housing policy? Would there be like, oh, this housing development, you know, it doesn't meet this goal? Or like, how does that play out in like any individual development decision? If, if like you have an example from the past?
Okay, I can kind of start out and then actually watch Ching Ching to weigh in a little bit too. But in a very, you know, general statement, right? I think with these policies and, you know, the broad goals, what they're doing is it's directing, you know, staff work time in some way. So like, you know, when we talk about our, our housing deficit, like what actions are we going to take to address, you know, the, the deficit that we have in housing and housing affordability? It's going to, you know, direct investments, you know, programs and, and things like that, that the city puts in place to address these larger issues. I don't know if there's anything to point out.
Yeah. And I think with, with housing production, it, it really comes down to several factors. So we're both looking to increase the capacity of local businesses to produce housing. So that's kind of with the workforce development, kind of supporting small businesses, contractors, developers to, to really facilitate that side of the industry or the industry side. I think we need to bring, identify more additional affordable housing funds to, so that we can get the levels of affordability that we need. And then there's a lot of city actions, including zoning changes and, and other work to, to actually get the housing to, to facilitate the housing on the, on the planning and policy side as well. So it's, there's a lot of, it's, yeah.
So it might be something like staff applies for a grant relating to housing and part of it is, hey, we've identified this goal of, you know, economic infrastructure and we think this helps us. And it's, it's that framework helps with the supply and maybe financing.
Yeah. So the infrastructure could help. The economic infrastructure can help with supply availability of contractors, which hopefully brings down construction prices as people are more familiar with the building types. I think right now, the, there is a, the comp plan is looking to increase the amount of middle housing that can be built. And currently we don't have many local businesses that work in that space. So there's, there's learning, lesson, training and learning that can be brought to the community on, around that and kind of producing that type of housing to expand those types.
Well, okay, that, that makes sense. Thanks for clarifying. And would it also be fair to say that like, this is like a, a menu of goals, then any particular development might meet one of these, but doesn't necessarily fulfill like all or even multiple of these?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely more, it's, it's less on that a any one project would meet all of these goals and more collectively our work would be to kind of find opportunities for projects to incorporate these individual goals. And obviously the more we can incorporate, I think we, as we would incorporate as many as we can, but yeah.
Okay, got it.
One follow-up to that too, is when we talk about this, you know, especially like, you know, I think kind of the example we're talking about here is like, you know, a private development application and its compliance. But when we're talking about, you know, aggregate over the next 20 years, I don't think the city sees this as a menu of like, we're going to do some of this stuff and, you know, not others. I think we're intending that we want. Everything we're putting in here are things that we want to generally try to accomplish over a 20-year period.
Sure. Yeah, that, that makes sense. I just, um, I wouldn't, I guess you say like someone should review this and get the impression that like, this is a list of requirements for any given
No, absolutely not.
Yeah. Okay, that's good.
And then just one, and I kind of want to do even a little bit more of a literal example too for like, if you take example, you know, policy 31 and the attachment that you have, it says streamline development process. And this is a little bit more like how it functionally works within the city. So like the language for that says, simplify the development review process where feasible and as needed to reduce housing costs. So that's one, like, a developer is not going to be able to meet that, but like, you know, for EP and H, that's like a directive, like figure out how to make our review process more simple. And like, you know, an implementation action for that might be, you know, having like technical assistance and evaluation of the land use permitting process and just things that it's like, you know, as a staff person, it's like, here's something that you go do to address something.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks for clarifying. No further questions.
Thank you. Vice Chair Powell?
Chair. My first high level question is at what level the goals, policies or actions, is there like a cost versus value analysis that's done?
That's a good question in terms of like weighing these things against each other.
Yeah, or even the cost to implement them. For example, there's, there was one about, you know, mandate. And one of the policies mandate recycling and organic composting throughout the city. So that seems like it would have a cost to implement it. And I'm curious, like, is the value proposition evaluated at the policy level or once it comes to the action level, the more specific things?
Probably be more at the action level. And, you know, they think this is a good primer for us to go back and actually evaluate. Cause I think to implement something like that for, you know, 120 policies, I think would be fairly challenging. Like there's NTV analysis of, you know, how some things might look. And, and that's just kind of a, we'll come back with like, you know, how we might tackle that.
Yeah, I think there's, at least to help us understand, you know, at the policy level, where things might be headed. There are some that are going to be zero cost to the city. And, and so identifying which policies are, you know, a stroke of the pen, so to speak, versus our new services or additional costs to private development or transportation or whatever it may be. I think it would I think it would be helpful to have some sort of indicator at the policy level, which ones are more expensive and which ones are not. Or at least what we anticipate they might be. And yeah, to be fiscally responsible with all of this is essentially where I'm headed. On those same lines, the idea of like, like fiscally sustainable growth, you know, regarding annexation, regarding expanding access through universal design. I think that there's some potential conflicts as as annexation happens. And we're trying to develop complete streets. And, you know, there's, there's conflicts that are going to arise in all of this. And I guess that's the second portion of the the value proposition question that is nagging in my mind. Because I like where a lot of these are headed from a from like a moral ethical, you know, good practice standpoint. I just worry about getting a little over our skis as a jurisdiction with some of these, as you mentioned, ambitious plans. So that's kind of the high level. And then one that I had a very specific question about. And it's a little, maybe it's a little hot topic in the news is in the regional planning number 91 policy. It says coordinate closely with Clark County, other adjacent jurisdictions and other government entities such as CTRAN, RTC, et cetera. And I, one thing that's frustrated me for all the years I've sat on the planning commission is the chicken and the egg of transit development. So it's always been, if you, if we build density, transit will come. That's CTRAN's current policy from, from what I can tell. And I think that if we're going to be proactive and spur development, some of the map locations that we've, there's got to be more control. There's got to be more proactivity from a transit perspective. Because right now, the density is, is, is the egg. The chicken's coming away later. And so I would consider a transit or regional planning policy that says the city develops a way to have more proactive control over transit throughout the city and potential annexation areas.
Okay, thank you for that, the comment. We'll, we'll go back and evaluate. I would say definitely within this proposed framework, for one more on the egg approach of that. And that's been kind of the methodology and thinking. It's, you know, I guess exactly what you said, it's increased density and, you know, have service follow.
Right. So that was my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner LaBelle.
Following on Zach's comment, I can see some merit in a fiscal note on some of this, however that would be handled. On the slide, you have currently 34 policies or whatever. That means in the current draft.
Yes, and those numbers are subject to change and probably will.
And so accessible, are you talking about design and price?
Which slide are you looking on?
Accessible housing.
So this one here?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's with, with that, I think it's including like access mobility as well. But I mean, we have four, goal six is more affordable housing. But I think with diverse, with diverse housing, you hopefully provide housing that is naturally affordable at a more variety of ranges of income. So it's ensuring that there are diverse housing types for people at different.
On the affordable housing, if they're thinking there will be subsidized housing or?
It's kind of all in the, everything we can get. So the goal would be to have as naturally affordable housing as possible. I think in the current market, there are challenges to what level is realistically achievable with that. But we are looking at both housing types, building types and ownership structures that would promote lower, lower price points.
And investing in people, you mentioned childcare. How would the city promote that?
What's one, one quick thing I'll tie in there and then I think to Jim Kapala. But I think the biggest thing is there are currently provisions within our existing code that make the development of childcare difficult. So at a very basic level, there are things that we could do as part of our code update process and in our policies to increase the viability of someone being able to develop a childcare facility in the city. If you look on a map, there's a lack of access and gaps. And, you know, just the idea in the concept that like, you know, childcare is a fundamental component of the workforce and our ability to tackle that opens up, you know, increased workforce productivity and, you know, the people to be able to participate and access the workforce, things like that.
Yeah, I like that. Along the way, for population projections, do you work with the school districts at all on what their projections are? How do you do that?
We do. Brian, I don't know if you want to weigh in because you've been more involved with that process directly.
It, it, in terms of the, well, in terms of the, the overall population that we, I think we've talked about here, citywide population that feeds into, you know, all of these processes. We have an allocation from, from Clark County that starts out as a countywide number. We get our, our sort of minimum amount we need to plan for. And we'll probably exceed that a little bit and to some extent want to a little bit just to ensure, to address the housing shortfall. I don't know if your question was about population of school kids or.
Yeah, I think that would influence the kind of housing we're, we're looking for, if it's going to be include families or.
Yeah. So I mean, we do work with and have had these discussions initially as part of the EIS, but, but we'll have to feed into the comprehensive plan and the capital facilities planning and so forth about what their, what their enrollments are, which historically they, they've pretty much generated. So we'll have to, you know, do some comparing to make sure that, that the enrollment projections they have are, you know, make sense in light of the total population that the city envisioned serving. But it, in terms of enrollments, it pretty much comes from them. But I think you're right. They, their process can inform ours a little bit.
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beck.
Hi, everyone. Couple of questions. In the policies document, mine begins with number three. It's numbers one and two.
So sorry, apologies for not explaining that. There, the numbers are sort of out of order at this place, but what we did is there's a large document that we have that has all 120 policies. We just pulled out the ones that directly relate to land use, climate, housing, economic opportunity.
Great. Because you referenced one and said it was something about something else. And 91 and my 91 is about childcare. So I was a little bit confused. No, 91 is about regional planning. There was another one that you had, I don't know. I thought I heard another one. Thank you. That's helpful. So I'd like to understand a little bit more about the process.
Sure.
When is the draft environmental impact statement process?
So the draft environmental impact statement is going to be released sort of towards like May, June, July timeframe. I believe it's a 45 day public comment period that we're proposing. And just to clarify, the goals and policies, there are going to be some, you know, proposed mitigation efforts that are part of the environmental impact statement that overlap with this. But this is sort of a tangential, parallel process to the environmental impact statement process.
So the reason I ask is, it under next steps, we talk about the draft comp plan being released in July, something like that?
It'll probably be a little bit later.
Okay, so the draft, the DEIS comes sooner before we get the draft comp plan. I thought those were usually the opposite. Can you help me understand that?
I think it's more.
What are we evaluating if the draft is issued yet? That, that's, as a member of the public, I'd like to understand.
Yeah. So at a very basic level, right, we have, to answer the question directly, the maps. So when we have possibility one, possibly two, we're looking at, you know, the configuration of our zoning changes, you know, and the potential impacts that result from them through all of these discrete categories. This, and it's a non-project action, so it's a little bit, I'd say like less direct. And for the goals and policies, there's not that type of process for this. It's directly related to, you know, the mapping.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Secondly, I love the aspirational quality of all the policies and the goals. But I'm really having a challenge. And I am aligned with Commissioner Cavell around this, around understanding how we move from aspirational to practical functional. Particularly around, if we have the comp plan and then we have what comes out of the comp plan, I see as, I understand as code changes. And then I'm assuming programs that would be developed to to support policy achievements or policy goals. Is that correct?
Yes. And that's what this document does directly. So when we're talking about the policies and the implementing actions, there are direct calls to develop programs. There are direct calls for all of that.
But the programs won't be developed as part of the comp plan. That's after this.
Yes.
And the code will be developed as part of the comp plan. It is, it goes along with the mapping effort, right? Where we're changing types and all that stuff.
Yes.
So that goes along with that. I, I'm just thinking, if I were a developer, and I'm not, but if I were, the policies and, and, and vision goals are so high level and so very broad. My question is that it feels like, it appears to me like we're touching everything very lightly. And I have personally a hard time understanding what are we prioritizing? In particular, what comes up for me is when a development is brought into the planning commission, let's say, or to the city in general, or to the staff, how is it evaluated? You know, one topic of discussion was, well, it doesn't have to meet all the policies for housing. It could meet certain ones, but how do we know what? Or how does the developer know what is of priority to the city and to the planning commission in order to respond with their development? And is that just what comes from talking with the city early on? Or is that, will that be identified a little more clearly in in perhaps focused area plans that will be developed for certain areas? Or perhaps, like, like, for example, there's a whole lot of policies as well as map changes, as well as code changes that are going to support housing and middle housing. And so we know housing is a priority, but I can't tell that housing is a priority based on all the policies. It looks to me like housing and childcare and coordinating with Clark County and urban growth area and a little bit of everything is all given the same weight. So I would really like some additional filters or ways to help organize and prioritize a lot of the, from, in my opinion, in my view, it's from the goals to the policies and the comp plan to the code and the programs that come out of it. Like, to me, that's the hierarchy. And maybe I have that wrong. I'd be happy to be corrected on that. But I, that's the way I see it happening. And perhaps some examples, maybe they're in focused area plans or whatever, on how, how these policies or goals are prioritized for the city. I would love to have everything. I'm just so aware that I can't in my personal life. I'm sure we can in this life.
Well, that, there's, let's start with that because there, I think, are a lot of things that I want to respond to in your comments.
Yes.
But I think, you know, one piece of feedback that I heard from that was get more specific and maybe we are going too broad in this. But I would say like, if there is an area, at a very basic level, we want the comprehensive plan to give us the space to be able to do the things that we know we want to do in the communities. This, this language is a little bit more broad and the actions are where we're going to get more specific for that exact purpose.
And, and the actions, when do those come?
Those will be as part of the draft comprehensive plan.
But will be, okay.
Yeah, people will have an opportunity, you all will have an opportunity to review that. So you're, that's, that's where you'll see that. So that, that will help clear up a lot of things and we're still pretty early in that process. And then outside, I want to get to the sub area planning piece, right? Because if you're talking about a developer and, you know, say, here's the comp plan, you know, how it, that's not going to be a useful way for them to prioritize. And, you know, one of the policies in here, I cannot remember the number offhand, but if somebody sees it in here, there's a policy that, I'm sorry, it's policy 42, sub area and corridor plans, which says develop sub area plans for key centers and corridor or citywide, facilitating the development of integrated residential, commercial, employment and community uses. So that's where we actually call like that. That's kind of the point of this document, right? It's, we have to have a statement that says do sub area planning. And like, we'll do those sub area plans. And when somebody sits down and, you know, a key growth area, we're going to say, here's more targeted, specific implementation items that we want to focus you to focus on in your, in your project. That makes sense.
It, it does make sense that it would happen then. I think my, my challenge is feeling that it is perhaps more subjective than objective in terms of prioritizing. And maybe that's just what's necessary in that certain area. It's just that how, how does, how does everyone else know? Other than the sit down with the developer discussion, how does everyone else know what will be, what the priorities are for there?
Yeah. So I guess to speak to that, I think a lot of the developments in, on, on a smaller scale at least, will be driven primarily by code. So I think where we would expect to see these influence more developer project, driven projects would be anywhere that a DA or master plan is implemented. So I think one of the future actions is likely going to be and implement a priority list for those DA and master plan negotiations of how do we prioritize asks to those developments?
Do you see that as part of the actions that would come with the comp plan?
Yeah.
I see.
But, but that would be a method for implementing kind of as you're, as you're saying, for us to be able to prioritize and actually implement these into real developments. So it, there would need to be another layer down for, for that conversation.
Well, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I do think that those bridges right now are kind of invisible to me. And, and having the bridge between the aspirational and the functional, practical, how do we evaluate this? And where, how do we know where to go with it is pretty important. Along with the idea of the transit that Commissioner Pyle was talking about. If sub area plans are being developed and we are identifying what our priorities are for those sub area plans and the priority perhaps maybe for a key center and corridor is that we have transit. There, I hope that there is a program set up or some kind of more coordinated manner set up to, to put in place to allow or to require transit be a key part of that as well. I think that's all I have to say. But Dominique, thank you and Jim Jim.
Yeah, thank you. And just one final piece of that. And I think there's kind of a feeling of like lack of clarity. Like, you know, how do you get from the aspirational to the specific? Like, I think that's going to be answered when we do this next, the next round of like, putting this out. It'll be, it'll be clear of like, okay, this is how we're connecting that piece to this.
So that's not in May.
No, that'll be later in the summer.
Later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay.
Appreciate it. Both of you for coming to present us these goals and proposals. But, and I want to echo some of the sentiments that was raised by Commissioner Beck regarding some of the prioritization. But how do we address when some of these policy areas might be in conflict with one another? Not just prioritizing our importance of them, but for example, when I look at developing more, building more houses, I can see that coming in an immediate conflict with environment, environmental goals. And so when we talk about streamlining the permitting process, does that mean perhaps less comprehensive environmental impact reports or less building code requirements? That might not be as sustainable, but it might be more affordable because. That might not be as sustainable, but it might be more affordable because I, I do foresee conflict with that. I have some other questions, but I could stop there for, and or list them all out if you'd like.
Yeah, let's, let's start with that one, maybe go one at a time. I think, you know, to that exact piece. And, you know, I think this is a, this is a theme that I'm hearing from the feedback that we're receiving is we need a little bit more clarity in our framework as to like, how we are going to address conflicts. Because, you know, there, there frankly are. But I think the concept of the sub-area plan is like, you know, having this language broad enough that it gives us the authority to be able to do these things generally throughout the city is positive. And there are going to be different things that we want to have happen in different areas of the city too. So like, we might emphasize, you know, environmental, you know, protection and restoration in one area in opposition to another goal. So I don't, I don't think like across the board, like thinking about the specificity of the city as a whole, we can make a statement that like prioritizing X over Y makes sense community-wide. It's probably going to vary in different areas. So I think that's the, the point of having some flexibility, but we can come back with something a little bit more specific on trade-offs and how that all comes together.
Yep. Appreciate it.
Just like the actions and how those are thought about and reviewed, where you have to look at the, really the entirety of the conference of plan policies and interpret call in terms of balance of policies. So there, I think there, both our existing plan and I think this one coming forward, there will be some inherent conflicts or, or if not conflicts, policies that sit in a little bit of tension. He gave us a good example there of one. Some of that, we, we can try to clarify that both through the process and the finding of folks that have a better sense of it. Some of it's always going to be there though. In terms of comprehensive plan and legislative actions and trying to discern what is the will of this, this conference of plan? Is this or that action consistent or partially consistent with the comp plan? And I just, just bear it repeating, I think everyone knows here, but just for the record, on, on development projects, when they come in, the code is what speaks to what they need to do. And so they, and they essentially have to comply with all of the applicable code parts, even if one may or may not be a priority. You have to comply with traffic standards, you have to comply with failures. And so the guidance for that is typically provided through the pre-application process and the application process. And then, you know, that's always something we, you know, need to work on improving, but that's, that's sort of where the relevant parts of it are, are sort of brought forward. It is a little harder to see. It's important for, I think, for somebody to be able to figure out, well, what does this overall city plan stand for and what are its priorities? And so, you know, maybe that's some way we can, we can talk about that a little bit. But I think inevitably there's going to be multiple priorities and not all of them sit easy with each other.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I think, I guess, trying to solve what problems the city can't solve. And I, I do see more so like, we can't necessarily solve all the climate problems and even though they are rare, we can mitigate them. But we can solve, you know, some of the housing problem more so is the direct powers that a city government has, which is where my, my bias and priorities would lie, although obviously I'm a believer in protecting the environment as well, but there is obviously conflict as we discussed. But I digress. So my, my next question is, I know we have a call out specifically for childcare, and I definitely am aligned with wanting to make that easier business for people to get into and make it more available for people. I also want to call, I think I'm finding on senior care, either just because it's important to note that baby boomer generation is the largest generation in American history and they are of retiring age. And that also have an equal strain on families as I think childcare has historically. Especially as generation alpha or whatever, the newest generation is, is the smallest generation and likely to be continuing lower birth rates. So I just wanted to put in that recommendation. I could be wrong that it isn't here, but I tried reviewing it.
Pretty quickly, are you asking if a policy exists or are you talking about, because we do have a policy related to that in here?
Oh, it is in there. Which one is it?
I have to remember off the top of my head here. Let me go through, like, this is something that, it may not be in this list. But we do have policies, we do have goals actually around like, you know, identity-based housing, you know, that piece, but it's also like providing for a wide range. So we, there's a concept that we're introducing called the, or not, that we're incorporating, that's called eighty-eighty cities. So actually, like, you know, planning for youth and for older populations. And there's policies around aging in place and ensuring that, you know, for instance, if somebody wants to be able to remain in their home as they retire, they have the ability to do that. There are policies in here that address that.
Great. And that seems well to my follow-up question, which is what, how do we identify, or how do we define identity-based housing then? Is it more senior-based then, or some of the references to cultural housing? I was just kind of curious what those, how, how the city is defining these.
Yeah, I, I think it's intentionally left pretty open-ended. I think the, the goal would not be for us to identify that, but to allow opportunities for those types of housing to, to be created as, as a community desires to, or is interested in creating it.
Perfect.
Yes, 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 yeah. There, I think one of the policies in here, I have to remember exactly which one. But we do, like, you know, we've talked about that of like, potentially like, thinking about like, you know, certain like, you know, affordable housing projects that are developed with like, identity-based, you know, kind of subcomponents and then thinking about community and like, there have been some actual projects in the state of Washington that have implemented models have been really successful because you have like a supportive community of, of people that are, you know, similar to you that have actually proven really effective. So we, we did have that in this framework. But, you know, community, you know, identifying what those, like, what those identity pieces are should come from community, whatever that, that calling comes from, as Jim said.
That makes sense to me. And I guess my final question would be in regards to the anti-displacement measures and just curious to hear if, if the intent behind this is to make sure that there's a balance between the needs of landlords as well as the, the tenants as well, just.
Yeah, I, I think it is, it is somewhat on that, but I think more focused on combating impacts of gentrification or potential impacts of gentrification. I think there's, there's definitely a lot of concerns of, as a community gains wealth and prosperity, that the people who are not able to benefit from that are the community members who are at most risk of displacement. So providing opportunities and protections for people to remain in place as a community gains wealth and, and therefore benefit from that wealth is, is really the intent, you know.
And to follow that point, right? Like, you know, it's kind of that, that dichotomy between, you know, supporting landlords versus supporting like equity parity communities, you know, and kind of the system and society we live in, like, you know, with no, like, no action given on either side, like, you are going to see those population groups that typically have been disadvantaged, like further disadvantaged. So that's why the focus in this policy framework is more around, you know, looking at our equity index and looking at the areas that are most susceptible to displacement and putting in additional policies and action items. And we already have been thinking about like potential actions around this to prevent displacement. And more of the effort is focused on there to make sure that we don't lose folks that are under community and have been here for a while due to increased development pressures.
Yeah, and, and I think, sorry, also, but I, I think it's also kind of going back to the landlord-tenant balance. It's, it's not necessarily just to focus on tenants because if, if you put in place policies that kind of restrict income entire, or sorry, restrict, completely restrict how much people can increase rents or, or other things that kind of shrink the revenue streams for the landlords, you may end up with deferred maintenance and lower quality housing for those tenants as well. So I think it's, we do want to look at that very holistically so that we can ensure that both the landlords are supported and can continue to provide that affordable housing and, and not have to increase rates too much to displace tenants or end up with housing situations that are not desirable or, or sub-quality.
Yeah, it's very glad, good to hear it because the more pressure or squeeze is put on landlords, so more likely they are to consolidate and less mom and pop landlords as opposed to more corporate ones that are able to adhere to regulations. So just want to make sure that, that, that's kept in mind. So I appreciate both of you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, one being, I feel like I've seen it in prior comprehensive plan presentations, but is there a flow chart somewhere that sort of details how we go from the vision to the goals, to the policies, to the actual code? Is that something that we could either send out if such a thing does exist or take another look at in subsequent meetings, just to sort of get that, that view? I think we had maybe some need to understand how it all relates together again. And I think there was one with like a tapestry, I don't know what I'm remembering, but if we can maybe see that again in subsequent sessions. No, the sandwich was something different.
We're, we're in need of another metaphor. I, I'm, I'm putting together.
Yeah, just something so that it's very clear for everyone, how all these different parts of this gigantic effort relate? So that we can just have a clear understanding of that.
Just so I make sure I understand that, right? So like, you know, I, I pulled up this slide because, you know, some sort of graphic that illustrates this potentially, but just like, how does this also relate to the code? How does this also relate to, you know, sub-area planning, just like the whole, you know, the whole thing?
Exactly. So seeing sort of those component structures, right, of the overarching plan? So we can say, you know, these goals here exist and then that relates to, or I guess, I think bridges is the term that I heard earlier, right? Bridges to this particular policy or that code change or is implemented via X, Y, and Z. So area planning, right? Just sort of a way to draw it all together so that the tapestry is more understandable, almost sort of a step back so we can see how it relates. And then from there, I think we'll have maybe fewer questions about the actual relation between the goals and the implementation, as it were.
We can put that together.
And then it looks like one of the slides mentions this was about two plus years of engagement. I know that we're talking about long-term planning, but have there been changes in priorities and prioritization since the outset to where we are now? Do we find that we've rebalanced things, as it were?
I would say as a general overall direction, just based on what I, I, you know, know and what we know as a project team from this engagement effort, the key themes keep coming up all the time. You know, I could say this, you know, probably several times and have, but you know, people at a very basic level are concerned about the affordability of housing, the affordability in the community in general, people are concerned about the climate. People want an equitable and inclusive community. They want to feel safe when they go outside. Those things still keep coming up. I think the ways, what we have heard and what has changed has been potentially the methods and the things that are, people are calling for. I think we're hearing new ideas and, you know, potentially new ideas, but like, those kind of foundational pieces, I think, are still very similar to the beginning of this effort. They're just getting more pronounced because of like, you know, ongoing societal changes and pressures. Like, people are like, oh, this, this is something that we want to address and deal with more. That makes sense.
That makes sense. And then my other question is just thinking about how we classify or think about, I guess, the relationship between the goals and policies. It would be nice to see, I know that we've seen sort of, there's a relationship between, you know, these policies may be relevant to these goals. But I don't know if there's a ranking or a classification or something we can see to say that this goal is, or sorry, this policy is really predicated upon this particular goal. And that's like the number one goal this policy tries to fulfill. It's also relevant to these other goals. And I, I don't know if that speaks to prioritization or just trying to get a little bit more clarity about the intent of that relationship between goal and policy, but that's my.
I think that'll be illustrated in the organization and flow of the actual plan document. I think this table format, you are, it's kind of like hitting everything in a giant bowl of soup. It, it is quite a bit to take in. And I think, you know, if I go back to that slide, right, that shows the sheet or, you know, the page, you know, the organization, my gosh, I'm so bad at this. I want to go that way, I guess. Like, this is an example, right? So when you look at like this goal, L U one, there's going to be a chapter, like, you know, you're going to open up the comp plan, you're going to go to chapter three, which is the land use chapter. It's going to have all the goals and it's going to have like the overall vision. And you're going to be able to see, you know, a roll up of all the policies that implement those goals at once. And we can think a little bit through. And I think one of the biggest things that I'm hearing from you all is, you know, one of our key takeaways is prioritization and doing some sort of qualifying statement or thinking through all of that and placing that in there. So when you get a sense of like, when we talk about connecting accessible neighborhoods, what does that mean? What are we actually going to do to do it? But I think the organization of that will become much more clear in the draft plan.
Perfect. And thank you. I think those are all the questions that I have. Thank you both.
Chair.
Thank you. If, if I could, I, I, as y'all are speaking about this prioritization and it, and implementing or stating priorities in the comp plan, I, I agree that it's very helpful for us to understand what the priorities are when we're evaluating actions or even policies. But I think that over the twenty-year time horizon can change so drastically that I'm, I'm a little afraid of, of like writing what the priorities are and stating them in the document rather than taking direction from council as council evolves and changes over the horizon. And so it would probably, I again, agree that it would be helpful for us as we're evaluating actions specifically to understand where the priorities are. But maybe there's discussion with council that could happen to give us kind of a, a here and now priority and still leave room for council to have direction over those priorities as time goes on. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Food for thought.
Yeah, I think that's why I think it might be more impactful to see just the relationship between all the pieces, more so than defining any one prescriptive.
No, yeah. That makes a lot of sense, doesn't it?
That makes a lot of sense. And that's something we absolutely can do. And to get to that exact point of like, you know, what is the near-term priorities? Then, you know, council kind of has already done that to the development of the strategic plan. We, we have, you know, what are our short-term priorities over the next five years? But what we can do is start to map that out. And again, you know, the idea of like, you know, while it would be nice to have like a specific to-do list of like, here are all the things that we need to do in our comp plan, the level, because we don't know what's going to happen in the future, right? We don't, we don't know what the next ten, fifteen years are going to bring. But the way that we've been using, you know, the CUSING comp plan and document over time is like, having enough coverage in the language overall that we can do those things. And we do have authorization when the winds change or the winds shift and, you know, there is more of a focus towards a certain thing. We have that language in there that gives us the guiding authority to be able to, to move on.
Thank you.
I thank you so much.
At least planning commission will recess until six thirty. Okay, the planning commission meeting will resume after our six PM break. Earlier we had a workshop on the conference of plan update, which brings us into the community forum portion of our meeting. Do we have anyone signed to speak today for community forum?
We have three people signed up to speak. Our first will be Richard Branzano.
Okay, I'm going to just read this quick preamble and we'll dive right into it. So, a community forum is held at each meeting of the planning commission. During the community forum, the public is invited to provide input on matters related to the planning commission's authority and responsibility for land use and development matters. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the commission. The chair will help you keep track of time. Remarks should be directed to the planning commission as a body, not to individual members or staff, and focus on subjects within the commission's advisory purview. Community members who wish to submit lengthy or detailed testimony are encouraged to email their comments to planningcommission@cityofvancouver.us. Please note that the community forum is different from testimony provided as part of a public hearing. In the case of public hearings, individuals indicating they wish to testify on the public hearing item will be called upon during that portion of the agenda. We appreciate, welcome, and consider community input regarding land use policy. Please call the first person up.
The first will be Rich Branzano and the second will be Jason Cromer. You may approach the table. The first will be Rich Branzano and the second will be Jason Cromer. You may approach the table.
Can we put that friendly timer on the screen?
Ready? Your mic is already on, so you, I'll start the timer when you begin.
So your mic is already on. We'll start the timer once you begin speaking, if you just want to state your name.
Okay. Did you all receive my email showing the listing of the property of? I asked, when I asked to speak, I also also. Attached a very extensive information about the property. So I wanted you to receive that and I would like to have emails so I can send it myself. Because apparently if you haven't gotten it, that's a problem. But anyway, I I own Coffin Center. And the intersection of Coffin Center is on Fourth Plain is one of the two intersections. North of the river. One is Maine and 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 Fourth Plain. And the other is Coffin and Fourth Plain. These are the major intersections. I'm actually Coffin's exactly lines up with the pier. Where Main Street lines up more with the bridge. You don't think of things that way, and I didn't either until I really looked at it. And so that's where we are and they're straightening it. They're straightening out Jefferson and Coffin. Right now, it's a big project. They knocked a building down and they're working on that right now. So I have a direct route to the river. It's it's being improved. I. I this, this is a crazy proposal. I just can't believe my commercial property is being downs. You know, requested to be down zoned to 10% retail, 10% commercial. So I just want to let you know. And the last forty, from the end of February to March to March, I entertained. Four parties. They would take whole, the whole buildings. So Birdie Time Pub is from Portland, they're very popular. And they were looking at the anchor, the twenty three thousand five hundred square foot anchor. Also, I countered a letter of intent from a national fitness chain. Planet Fitness. For the anchor. This is in a short period of time. Then I entertained the people from the. Flop Food Court, which is a very, very popular thing that landed in 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 Portland and they've been anticipating for a long time. It's part of the Hyatt. Hyatt Hotel. Six hundred eighty million dollar project and they were, they put together this beautiful food court on the east side of the building. And they came up and they love, love my building. Okay. Then then a national. Community driven shared office space also. Came up in that period of time and looked at, you know, loved the building. Actually wanted both buildings because they their facilities are more like what I have with forty thousand square feet. So I'm asking for. You know, I'm asking that the that that the designation actually be because I anchor the northwest part of the downtown. That and they're there because of what's going on downtown. They feel they're part of downtown. That I I am a real community node. And it's turning into a look of a recreation, food. Beer. All aged kind of facility, the whole property.
The end of your time.
Your time has expired.
I would like the the regional activity center is more appropriate as a recommendation for my property. It's contiguous property, four hundred twenty nine thousand.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments, but your time has expired. Thank you.
Okay.
So the next up to speak will be Jason Cromer and I'll begin the timer when you start speaking. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Jason Cromer. I live here in downtown Vancouver. Technically, the Lincoln neighborhood, but close enough. Yeah, just wanted to speak tonight on really the second half of of tonight. I had a look at. The designs for the two proposals of the properties that are being upzoned. And the upzoning is great, but I wanted to express my concern about the actual designs. And I know that this committee, it might be out of the purview to. Advise on designs of developers. I fully understand that, but I did want to express my concern with the fact that. The overwhelming majority of the land use of these two properties is parking. When you look at the revised, so after the updates, it's almost two thirds of the land use is parking. And if we look ahead at what the comprehensive plan is dictating and incentivizing a healthy. Good land usage, these two designs are not that. So I'd really look to the committee to either express concern or. Maybe pass any of this notion on to if we're going to build housing. Let's build housing. Let's build green space, walkable, healthy environments and not parking lots, you know? So it was a little bit disappointing seeing an overabundance, hundreds of parking lots for seventy units of housing. Ridiculous, honestly, if I'm to be honest. Otherwise, yeah, that that's really it. Thank you for your work. Otherwise, and even though I wasn't here for the physical portion of the the planning committees. Or the city staff's presentation on the comprehensive plan, I would like to also like give my support for for the great work that the city staff has done in that regard. It's it's a great step forward for the city to have more bike friendly, walkable and transit oriented developments. And to really move Vancouver into the 21st century. So I thank you all for your your help and pushing that forward. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person present in the room or are they virtual?
The third person is Kimberly Elbin, who was joining us remotely, but I do not see them on Zoom.
Okay, as they are not on Zoom nor online. I believe we can just close out that portion of. The. Agenda. So being that there are no more individuals signed up to talk who are present, the community forum portion of the meeting is over and community forum is now closed. Which takes us into the following agenda item, the 2025 standalone zoning changes. And it looks like Brian will introduce that item for us from. Over there. Just give him a moment to get settled in.
Okay, so just to Brian's address for the record. We have a brief review here of a couple of standalone rezones that we've received. We'll go through those. Get your feedback on what either additional information you need or what concerns you have. Heading into the scheduled public hearings before the planning commission on May thirteenth, we don't yet have city council dates, but presume they would be in the month following. So the individual changes prior to the adoption of the conference of plans was the subject of some council discussion last year. They wanted to set some direction on only hearing a limited number of of proposed legislative changes. And those are essentially, they they had a resolution on this. Those that provide short term housing, address unmet council priorities, which aren't specified beyond that, or address process issues. And these, the two before you are are. Fall within that housing category. So we're bringing them forward as such, and this obviously. Goes parallel with the emerging comprehensive plan work. Really continuing comprehensive plan work. We have, as as you know, we have the draft mapping and it's just draft out right now. The D E I S will be published at some point in the next couple of months. It'll be converted into a based on the public comments we received to finally preferred alternative will be. Established and then we'll head into hearings before the planning commission city council at the end of the year. The first of the two is the Bella Grove Zone change. It's on fifty east of Fifty Ninth Street and Hundred Thirty Fifth. R eighteen, R thirty, and it is. Surround it has surrounding active uses on three sides. And a school campus to the south. It's. Because of the dependency of the carpets, the planners want to make everyone aware of of what's anticipated. Again, just through draft initial mapping, which is by any means the final word, but the medium scale neighborhood is is on possibility A and B. Currently on the city websites for both of those. This site is near Burr Bridge Creek, which essentially forms pretty close to the southern border of the shaded area. The site does have a quite a bit of hydroic soils and at least modeled wetlands throughout. It also has a a, it has previously been approved and that approval still remains in effect for a. Under the R eighteen zone for a site plan, which essentially proposed development at the northern two thirds of the site. Shown here. It's a little hard to see all of it. Some of the bottom part is is cut off, so I just wanted to give you a fuller view of the portion that was developing. And if it's, if the rezone is approved, the applicant would, is indicated that instead of having sticking with their existing approval for a hundred plus units, they would go to. A hundred and sixty four unit apartment. And the, I think the fact that the prior site plan had been approved gives a sense too of what would likely be allowed in terms of of the critical lands areas. So as mentioned, the the northern about two thirds, about sixty percent of the site is what was what was on the approved site plan. And so it's likely something like that would be. What we see in terms of, you're seeing it here in terms of at least at this point, the conceptual site plan, the applicant. You know, pending involvement of a development agreement, the applicant could modify their their proposals from what you see here on the screen, but this is what they're they're generally envisioning. And so with that also, I think I mentioned there was a. We were waiting for a traffic study. We did receive one yesterday. It hasn't yet been reviewed by. Our our traffic planner, transportation planner, I can't say not unexpectedly, the the traffic study indicates that. It would the going, changing the zoning would result in not quite a doubling of traffic, number of trips produced. A little bit less than that, not unexpected or atypical for for when you do a rezone like this. But at least as indicated in the study, no, no. Need to, no, no demonstrated need per city code to mitigate on surrounding intersections. So we'll have the traffic in the peer packet for the hearing in May. We'll have the studies and the background information in case that comes up. As I say, we just received this yesterday. As well as transportation staff, if there's any questions that come around it, but at least to me, at least looking at the initial study, it didn't raise any particular. Concerns. So with that, I'll turn it back to the planning commission for any questions you have again about more information you need or concerns about the 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 project. Getting into the hearing.
So just a quick clarification, Brian, these would be two separate hearing items when we get to.
Yeah, yeah. And so I wanted to break it up in the presentation just to let the group talk about each one individually.
Great. That was my question. Christian, you're back?
Thank you, Chair. My understanding is that. Any advanced changes are limited by the city council. To those providing short term housing, addressing unmet council priorities or addressing process issues. Can you explain how this proposal meets those?
It meets, it it doesn't meet all of them. I think it just speaks to the the housing provision.
So simple housing.
Yes.
And. Based on, I mean, I understand the future map for the comp plan shows housing changing in that area. When we look at the other housing priorities or the other policies and everything, what else? What other? Policies or or goals would this development meet? In particular, since one of the community members mentioned about parking, I'm curious with regard to. Site layout and density and so forth, and how that may meet or may not meet the goals of the comp plan.
Well, I think in terms of, and some of those issues such as parking are talked about in more detail as appropriately so in the zoning code as opposed to comprehensive plan policies. But in terms of looking at the parking issue. Currently, there is not a maximum number of limp of parking spaces and. Although we've talked about, I I think before this group, I believe as well, that in the anticipated new parking codes, we will. Have smaller numbers of minimum parking. Those will be reduced. And in fact, there's there's activity at the state that that may require that. In terms of legislation coming forward, but. Other than some areas, I don't know that will necessarily apply minimums, excuse me, maximums. That the idea there is there should be some flexibility to if if developers, which typically do choose to to. Plan over or provide over the requirement in terms of parking, if that's what they need to get the project built, then. Then that we should generally allow that. So that discussion needs to kind of, you know, work its way through, but that's that's sort of the thinking as I understand it so far about where. We might land on parking in the future and then and where it is now.
Has any discussion occurred as to increasing the density of housing and decreasing the parking?
In, well, again, we we we, I think, do wish to pursue a strategy of of decreasing the minimum requirements.
Yes, I mean, with this particular. Development proposal.
So if I can interject here, just to be clear, the conceptual site plan in the document is under the old zoning, right? And there's not been a conceptual site plan.
Well, no, no, there there is an approved prior site plan. The conceptual one that we we saw here is, again, it's conceptual. It's not binding unless there's a development agreement. But it's what they envision under the future code.
Right. And you're asking for rezoning.
Yes.
To allow a higher density. Which I understand.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering what goes with that higher density and if there's been any negotiations or encouragement to increase density, decrease parking.
Well, let me just back up because I think I misspoke a second ago. The the, one of the reasons they are applying now is that they would obviously, like most developers who want to get their project built sooner. So if 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 the fact that it's a, that if they're able to submit their site plan application prior to new. The new code being adopted probably at the end of this year, then they would be reviewed under the existing code. So.
Get to increase their density, but reviewed under the existing code.
The the proposed rezone is is a change under the current zoning scheme. Yes. So if the rezone is approved and it's it depends on time, of course, they would have to then. Not just have the rezone approved, but get their their app, their pre application in for the. For the site plan, but but if that goes according to plan, then yes, they would go have R thirty zoning under the current zone. And they would be subject to other aspects of current zoning requirements, including regarding parking.
And since you're bringing it forward, I'm assuming that staff supports it and I'm asking for what reason do you support?
The. Well, in terms of the bringing forward, it's it's compliant with the council's policy. And so we 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 accept the rezone and 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 bring it forward. We do anticipate a positive staff recommendation here. In that it would bring more housing to the and at a higher density than is currently allowed to the market. So. Well, I don't know that it's the case here, but if the rezone weren't approved, it's always possible they might choose to develop under the current R eighteen zoning. I I kind of doubt that in this case, most folks want to utilize the higher density and what's envisioned under the medium scale neighborhood is is allowances at least for higher density. But that's, that's a possibility. I think the general staff thinking is that going to the higher density makes sense. And, you know. Although we might want it to to wait until the new comprehensive plan comes into place, that that we don't have the the policy basis to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay.
Thank you. So the the parking initially, the large parking lot also caught my eye initially, but what else caught my eye upon visiting the location is. In my my experience precinct walking there, so I've I've been around the area quite a bit. It's kind of. There's, I guess, there's not too much around there. So I guess I understand why the need for parking, because, you know, you have to drive to a lot of places given the location. And so is there anything like, there's, I noticed there was some development on the roads around the area. Are we upgrading the the infrastructure around there, the city? At the moment? And is there any development in the future for more businesses to 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 get to that fifteen minute walkable city or?
Well, I'll be able to answer those questions better, better at the hearing because I can look into them a little bit. In terms of infrastructure projects, I I I can't nearby. I can't name any off the top of my head. So that's one of the things we'll, particularly transportation infrastructure, we can talk about at the hearing and we'll we'll address that in the staff report. In terms of all of ours, I think all or most of the new zones envisioned are going to be more. In terms of all of ours, I think all or most of the new zones envisioned are going to be more flexible in terms of, you know, maybe not, say, in industrial zones, but in the commercial and residential zones, there is intended to be more flexibility. So hopefully that may yield some additional, some additional development, say, of some commercial and residential zones and vice versa.
Yeah, because the area also, like on 96th Street, or is that 59th Street, is kind of under duress, I guess, in terms of parking, like it already is pretty heavily utilized by some of the mobile home communities nearby. That, and other apartment complexes, I did notice that there is a large amount of parking already in use, so. I understand the need for parking, but yeah, it is definitely eye-catching. But I don't want to get in the way of any new housing, so I would also support this, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavill. Thank you. Flash your pile.
No questions for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Odell.
I'll be interested in the traffic study, and are there any design standards that will apply?
In terms of aesthetic design standards, well, I don't, in terms of the new code coming forward, given the location of this, I don't know that there would be extensive design standards, but using the, are you thinking of the height, or is there a particular aspect of the structural? In terms of aesthetic design standards, no, I don't believe there would be any. But, but there are code provisions that address some of those things, so. There was a particular aspect of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, I think we can move on.
Okay, that, let's take a look at the second proposal. It's called the 58th Street Zone Change. It's R22 to R50, 58th Street and 76th Avenue. Also in the same general area, not directly proximate to the previous one, but at the same central northern part of the city. The, also surrounded by mostly, or at least on a couple of sides, active uses, and there is a park to the north, and a stormwater facility, all those zoned park to the south. It's also envisioned for, at least in terms of the possibility so far, as medium-scale neighborhood in the future. And this is the proposed, again, conceptual site plan. There is not a prior approval that I'm aware of. It was, the applicants indicated that they're looking at a 77-unit apartment proposal. If the rezone is approved, it does, does have a fair amount of parking. The building is at least abutting the street, or proposed to abut the street. So there's also, we'll also provide the traffic study on this, this development. It also, you know, given the rezone, is envisioning increase in traffic, not, not quite twice as much, a little bit, percentage terms, a little bit less than the last one, but still an increase in traffic, but doesn't envision necessary improvement, needed improvements under city code in the area. We'll have more detailed information as part of the staff report discussion at the hearing. Like the prior site, this, this site doesn't involve any environmental critical lands.
Commissioner Cavill.
Plan, and I know this is kind of a conceptual rough draft, include like pedestrian cut-through to the park?
Well, the park would be to the, the park is across 58th Street to the north. The.
On slide eight.
Where's this thing, City Park? Because my understanding, and I can confirm that again with, I'll just look at county maps online, is that.
Yeah, there's two parts. It says, yeah, and then on slide eight, it says like the parking lot abuts the park. Which, yeah. Well, I guess there's access from.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was confusing the two, the two proposals. So there, there doesn't appear to be one in the site plan. That's something we can ask the applicant about, what, what their plans might be, or how that access might work.
Yeah, I just wanted to raise that, because sometimes, I mean, it does look like there's street access, but it's pretty narrow. And, yeah, you'd want to make sure that people living there would not, like, somehow ironically walk the long way around to go to the park or something. So just wanted to raise that. But no further questions.
Thank you. Flash your pile.
Brian, is this a, is this a repeat applicant? Have we seen applications for upzones in this area by the same applicant in the past few years?
I think by the same applicant, not at the site.
Not at this site, but in the area, I think. It would be, it would be helpful if the applicant is present to provide some photos of previous development that they've done in the area. Because I think that other R22 parcel, I feel like that was a rezone as well that we approved several years ago, which would just be helpful if the applicant could bring some precedent along. Other than that.
Commissioner Odell.
Have you gotten any feedback from the neighborhood yet?
No, the, you know, we typically don't at this stage. We'll do the usual notice in addition to the requirements, which are, you know, published post the site and, mail, hard copy mail notice to everybody at 500 feet. We, you know, we, these are active neighborhood associations, so we can contact, remind them of this development.
I think they'll have an opinion, because that's a pretty big pop of density. So I'll be interested in their comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Beck. Thank you, Commissioner Jay.
So you mentioned the area that's designated as a park south of its stormwater basin? Correct?
Yeah, that was in the, I'm zooming in here. I may have. School.
I was just curious if that was, if that was going to be developed into a park in the future, but if it's gonna.
Yeah, so we can have a little more detailed information at the hearing about status of the park, not just, it's a park.
Yeah. Parks are good. Anyway, thank you.
I would like to echo, I think, some of my other fellow commissioners' comments that we would love to, I think, see a little more detail when we get to that stage of the public hearing. So I think if whatever materials the applicant is able to provide, and/or if they're able to be present or want to present anything to us, that would help us really understand.
Yeah, no, we'll pass that on, and obviously typically in an application, they do present their case.
Great. Just because it's a little difficult to envision what their goal is, looking at the site plan as submitted. And I know it's very preliminary and conceptual, but it still leaves little to be desired if we're trying to understand what their ambition is. So other than that, I have no comments. Generally in favor of increasing your density as long as it's done in the right way, so. Thank you.
I don't have anything further on this presentation.
I think there being nothing further from my fellow commissioners, that takes us into staff and chair communications.
I think the staff know nothing is particular to communicate. Rebecca will be back next week, as will the continuing discussion on the next month, as well as continued discussion on the comprehensive plan.
Okay, very good. Then I think we all look forward to hopefully gaining a little more clarity on that, based on some of the notes that we had for that part of the agenda. And there are generally no chair communications, except that I continue to appreciate the engagement and enthusiasm of all of my fellow commissioners. So that being said, this meeting of the Vancouver Planning Commission is hereby adjourned.